Days, thank you Blake.
Yes.
All right, good evening Zoom land, we are ready to go, sorry we're late, there's technical difficulties. We're gonna start our seven PM meeting at seven thirteen, please stand and say please.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So right off the bat, approval of the agenda. All in favor? All right, so we'll jump right into discussion items, call since twenty one oh seven. Comprehensive early learning plan. So there's a number. So there's a number of different policies that we'll discuss tonight. And we are, we're gonna work through those that first that are essential, that were required, required to have by law, that haven't been updated. So this is one of those policies, so Salina, Salina had created a spreadsheet. And we're first gonna tackle those policies that are essential. And then we will work through all the rest of our policies and work to update those in the language on those. So this is one of those policies, if, if. There's any preference on changing it, this would be the meeting to discuss that and then of course. We'll run it by whoever we need to, whether that's our legal counsel and then hopefully bring it back for the first round. Yeah, so they have, they have an attorney, Abigail Westbrook is her name, and she does all their, a lot of their drafting, sometimes districts will go out on their own. Draft policies and then those will pass back through WASTA, so we had a number of policies, like our sex offender policy. Or the prohibition of sex offenders on campus that actually was written first and across from then. Filtered back and through WASTA now, a lot of people are using it, but yeah, this is drafted by WASTA, it's one of their model policies.
And so my comment was, I know, so that was was just some boilerplate language, but we're talking about third grade students. At that level not reading, and is that too late? These interventions need to start earlier than third grade, and we have a lot of language about, okay, well, if they're not at that level, the reading level for third grade, in third grade, and we're talking about notice and meeting with parents to pass them on to fourth grade. So we're talking about kids that aren't at grade level in third grade and then moving on to fourth grade. Can we go lower, may go first grade, second grade, it seems like at third grade. We've had a lot of opportunity for intervention and that could happen for here.
Yeah.
So we do.
Third grade, we will like nine.
Our inter, yes, interventions start at review and at Woodstrand, well before third grade, third grade is. Like they're kind of their watermark, so that's why they highlight that in here. And then there's some state reporting requirements around K four and reporting to parents and those kinds of things, but reading interventions start in the classroom. And then start with interventionist. Most of our pullout intervention doesn't start till first grade, but we do have reading intervention from the beginning, almost.
Do you think that we should lower this then, more than third grade, or is that the benchmark?
What line you specifically point to?
So this is.
Yeah, requirement specific to third grade students.
Yes.
So the reason, the reason why it's in there is that there's two, two content markers. And one of them is reading levels at third grade, that research has shown that if they're not reading at grade level by that, and students are behind. And really, the. The ability to catch those students up is more difficult. And so that's kind of the big measuring stick, that if you get, get behind and proceed after third grade and you're far behind. You're gonna struggle to get caught up, in fact, there was, it was kind of an urban legend, but they were saying. They were projecting like, I think it was like. How many prisons develop based upon elementary reading scores or something? Exactly, yeah, so, so I, I don't know that that is. You know, that's true, if it's urban eleven, urban legend, but so third grade reading, the other one is ninth grade algebra. If you can't get it by ninth grader, you continue to have algebra in like tenth grade and things like that. You won't get caught up to the extent that you'll know math beyond that. So, so that's why that's in there, is that that's a very, very important marker for us. To be honest with you, one of the struggles we have in Prosser. Is that there, you know, Key River View is a K one two, and then, so that work goes in at River View. And then it's measured at heights, and heights kind of takes the hit for that, you can't really address it, so. So translating that into practice at a different building and the data following the kids, it should be taking place before, and so that's part of. Deanna's work about, we, we use an approach to literacy called balanced literacy. And it's, it's not terrible, but it really works on comprehension and meaning making. And it, it was kind of weak in the area of phonemic awareness. And so within the district, we are looking at more phonics based programs, because we recognize that there does need to be a blend. Not only does there need to be comprehension and meaning making lessons about students thinking about what they're reading and processing it. But there also needs to be community awareness, so that fluency and fluidity can happen when a student's reading.
So let's talk about balanced literacy, because. I think that's the topic I hear about most from elementary teachers, our elementary teachers and parents, and there's so many studies, scientific studies. That balanced literacy just doesn't work, you're not learning phonetic sounds, you're not learning spelling words, and you know, you guess from the context. Okay, what's happening in the picture and that's gonna match the words, it's kind of that way, you're not learning, you know, you're not learning that decoding of reading. So that, I mean, I have so many people talk to me about, when are we changing that curriculum, and is that something we're working on?
So we actually don't have curriculum, teaching, a lot of the bill, the building units of study were built many years ago. And true balanced literacy is a balance of teaching students to, you know, read phonemes and sat letter sounds and all of those things, but what happened when balanced literacy. The original balanced literacy came along, there, there was a pendulum swing away from teaching those, those foundational literacy skills. And that is one of the reasons we need to adopt curriculum, we've already implemented measures with. With a systematic phonics instruction approach, but you know, Kevin can talk about it too, but if. The, the word balanced literacy, I know has a like bad connotation, but it's. You have to have both, so you have to teach kids how to read, teach them to read. And then you need the part where they do learn meaning making and understanding and discussing text, but you have to have both. And there's a time where the district swung too far away from, from that piece and we're still getting right back.
And it's not the balance of reading that's. Or balanced literacy, that's the issue, because phonics is part of balanced literacy. What we ended up getting into is there's a synthetic phonics, which is what you're talking about, you're breaking down those phonemes. And then you have the analytic phonics, when they're looking at pictures or words around them to figure out that word. And that's what Deanna is talking about, it went too far to the analytics and we're trying to bring it back. The effect size for phonics work is, is quite high. One of the things that we implemented at Woodstrand and with a few of our teachers is Hagerty. And it focuses on the phonemes and learning the phonemes and, and breaking the syllables out. And so far, well, it's my growth goal with Deanna, so the data that's coming back from, from the teachers around that AK two is, is really good. So part, part of that problem is we don't have curriculum.
Yeah.
We don't have a core curriculum in all three buildings.
If, if what you're using seems to be working well, wouldn't it make sense to just go ahead and implement something similar?
Yes, but you don't want to do it before you have data to support it.
I mean. So he's doing the research basically and using, and the data for that, but again, that's just a small portion of reading, that's not the whole reading program. So, and, and, and what he's doing, Hagerty is a K two program, basically, and we need word work all the way through fifth grade, so. After kids learn, you know, their letters and sounds, and you have to move into word work. And that is the, the next piece we need to add, is our third through fifth graders need to be doing word work. So those pieces are, have been missing, and that has been part of our goal with this curriculum adoption, and so that's one of the reasons it's so important.
So do we do spelling words then in correlation with that, I've had people tell me that Prosser elementary schools don't do spelling words, and that that's, that's why they took their kids out of school.
So there's a difference between spelling tests, which is memorizing words and then working on spelling based on.
Work.
The phoneme, the phonemes and the phonemic awareness. That is part of that, I mean, this year I've even seen the kids do the different hand motions of. Breaking those up to spell words, Matt was with us one day when we were in classroom, that they were doing, doing that to spell the words. So as part of it, it's connected to the work, you don't want it separate, and it's not just a memorization of spelling words. And, and that was the old thought, and the newer, the, the science of reading, that research is coming out, Scarborough's rope. Is building that with, so it's all connected, it's in context that we use it in context, so. What we'd really like, and these programs are offering this, is that whatever they're practicing with the phonemic awareness, it's also been being applied. Yeah, spelling those words, but then also being applied to the writing. As if there's no extension to the writing, you're not gonna have true transfer, it's too isolated.
Is what Woodstrand's doing for reading curriculum separate, different than what KRB is doing?
We, we all three have different core curriculums right now.
I think, I know, well, I talked about reaching out to the families that have left the district, I think if we did that, we would find that a lot of people said that they'd left. Because of the reading curriculum being balanced literacy versus the science of reading. And I know one family, when a private school said, my kids weren't doing spelling words in first grade. This is the craziest way to teach reading, and I mean, either, either I don't have it, it'll come back or not come back, but I think that's important information when we look at declining enrollment, especially those elementary numbers. To reach out to those families and see why they left, and if there's a member that's saying that the reading curriculum needs to fix that. What percentage of our third graders are at reading level, grade level?
So I, I, I couldn't tell you the exact percentage of the, at this very moment, prior to the pandemic. Because that's the other reason they say third grade, because that's when they, they actually have a state assessment score that they're measuring to standard. We were at forty two percent, forty three percent.
That seems low.
It is.
Does it increase much fourth grade, fifth grade, or does it stay at that forty two, forty?
It increases in fourth grade, fifth grade, this is kind of, actually kind of a state trend. Crease's fourth grade, fifth grade, goes to sixth grade and, and they drop, and then they go back up seventh grade, eighth grade. And then they don't test again till tenth grade, and then that's normally their highest score. So yes, and then I think by then we were, the last time we had a real assessment score was. Two, was that seven, yeah, I don't remember the exact. I think it was. I was gonna say seventy two, so.
The only experience I have is that I have a young grandson who went to your kindergarten, first, second, and third grade until the pandemic bit. He was a voice game speller and reader, so. Maybe there's some of the difference, what can help to get it home?
Sometimes, but we can't, we can't rely on that.
Well, yeah.
So it's great when we have that and parents are able to do that, but we have parents that, you know, sometimes aren't able to do that. You know, if it was, if it weren't in English, maybe they are able to, if that's.
And also, you know, years of those kids, they maybe start reading until they first grade or second grade.
Yeah, it's, things have changed.
Kindergartners need first grade, right?
That's why I say that again.
Kindergartners need first grade.
It's, it's almost, so I can tell you, so for it, cause, so I taught math in middle school. The concepts I was teaching in middle school math, as to, in sixth grade math around fractions are being taught in fourth grade now.
Yeah, cause my grandson is doing.
Yeah.
Kindergarten math.
Kindergarten is not that since next.
No, so we talk about our third graders, that forty two percent are at grade level. And I think the statistic is, and it's a documented statistic that, you know, it's thirty, thirty five percent of kids will learn the decoding of reading on their own. No matter what you have, whether they're, you know, they've got parents that are reading to them, parents that have dock ritz or parent, you know.
They just kind of, for whatever reason, kind of a nat, naturally they're reading, it's not.
Right.
For them, yes.
So you're gonna learn, thirty five percent are gonna learn no matter what, they're gonna figure it out, and we're a forty two percent number of kids. So I guess my question is, what, are we teaching twelve percent?
That's why we need change, and that's why we need consistent curriculum, and that's why we need the balance back in what we're doing in our literacy program, and we're working towards that, but again, it's. Buildings in isolation because we don't have a common curriculum for people to follow. And then when we have a common curriculum, then you can set, then you set the common expectation, and this is what we do. And, you know. There were many, it's been many, many, many years since any curriculum was adopted for K five literacy. There's been resources and things purchased, but River View made up their own. And that's what they've been using. And as wonderful as our teachers are. We don't necessarily have experts, and it was made probably well before, a lot of, some of the people we have still working for us at this point, so. It is essential that we have a research based, data driven curriculum that follows the science of reading. And that's what we're, we're working on, and hopefully we'll have actually a, a recommendation here in the next couple of weeks for K five.
That would be great.
Looking at this policy. Much should be page. This is page six of the packet. I'm not sure what might be the. Third page of the, you know, but one, second paragraph from the top, it says the. District must obtain parent guarding center regarding appropriate grade placement. And the intensive improvement strategy to be implemented. And I think this has, the way I read this paragraph, it's whether we move kids to the next grade level or not. So I guess my question regarding that specific paragraph is. You know, if a kid's reading below the grade level and we start implementing these processes, which you're outlining further down in this policy. Is it, is it our policy not to recommend holding kids back to give them that extra year of. Learn.
We don't technically have a policy that says that, but the practice.
Yeah, the retention of the student, its effect size is thirteen hundreds. Four tenths is where we want to be, so it's, well, it's not effective.
I, I actually don't think this is.
Okay.
This is a well-written part of the policy, because we don't, we really, rarely do we ever recommend retention. There's some, you know, sometimes spec, special circumstance, or like in kindergarten sometimes. Or, you know, we have students in special education that might be until they're twenty one, it's not necessarily retention, it's more of a. Extended plan for them to be in maybe that elementary next year or the middle school next year. So don't spend seven or eight years at the high school, like, please spread that out, but we, we rarely would even. Recommend retention, it's normally comes from a parent asking for that. And because the research is very, it's, I mean, there's a lot of research on it. Doesn't, it doesn't really help, so it's our, it's our job to meet the kids where they are and not just hold them back because they're not, they aren't reading the level.
A few paragraphs, the second paragraph, the, I actually have questions in the last two paragraphs of the same page. It says students that are in transitional bilingual instruction as well as. Students with disabilities or in the bit, in individualized education, IEPs. Are exempt from this process, is that because they have a completely separate process from this policy?
No.
Why would we exempt them?
So a couple of different reasons, so specifically, for special education students. It would, it would depend on the student, but those students are in special education because they are not working on grade level. Okay, so there, you're not gonna stay because you have a third grader who might be functioning at the level of kindergarten, or they, we know they aren't reading at a. Third grade level that we're gonna retain them, so, you know, or even recommend that they be retained or even. So it doesn't mean they're not gonna get reading intervention or any of those things, and also we know that the parents know, we're required, we report to all the parents what grade level kids are reading, it's on their report card actually. So the reason for that is that those students are getting specially designed instruction that is already considered intensive because they have a need. The bilingual students is different because. Because when a student comes in reading, if we, like in our program, or even if it was a fifty fifty program. They're learning in English and in Spanish, primarily in Spanish for us, and then transitioning to more English until they're kind of at fifty fifty. And the tipping point, the research shows, is fourth grade for those students. So they are not learning pure English, you know, purely in English from the beginning of kindergarten and then hitting third grade, they're learning in two languages, so they get a little extra time, I guess, to look like that, is that? A good explanation?
So in general, we're talking about a general school population, not, not so specific, very specific needs and barriers that.
Yeah.
Need to be addressed in other ways, not to say that we can't include those students in intervention.
Very soon we do.
We can, but they have specific needs that need to be addressed in addition to.
Outside of this policy.
Yeah, 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 and, and even, you know, like IEP, it's a, you know, that's a legal document. A lot of the money we receive for T BIP or transitional bilingual and, you know, instruction program. Allows us to kind of tailor the educational, like differentiate for those students, so the curriculum may be different. To help them transition to the English language, so.
And I missed getting my last question.
That, the question you had earlier, we really. So one of the things that, it was kind of innovative that Chris Moore did was she pushed her student population to read at home, or to have parents read to kids. So we used to have programs like Book It, where kids could go to like Pizza Hut in Sunnyside and get a free pizza if they read. So really, this idea that there is instruction, but we also want to encourage students to read at home. And so, and if a student is behind, we really need to do our best on the school's part to pull the parents on board and say. Here's how we turn around for your kids, we don't ever want the parent to be surprised and say. I didn't know my kid was in remedial reading, or I didn't know they, they were in this intervention class, if I would have known. I would have pushed them to be reading more at home or learn their times tables or whatever. So that's part of that focus too, is that we've talked a lot about communication. But that communication sometimes is a broad messaging system, sometimes it's one to one about like. Here's what we're seeing in your child's education, here's what we need, or here's what we're recommending. Like, as Deanna had said, holding kids back, sometimes we have parents that, you know, that, that was kind of a threat in my household that like. You'll get held back, or even worse, you'll have to do summer school, do you want to use your summer like that? So kind of reframing that. Those types of interventions, holding students back tend to separate them from their peer group and also. Kind of marginalize them in some ways, they're like, oh, you got, you know, so. I don't know if that program still is there, there, there were. All right, yeah, so there are a number of different programs that, like I grew up with, that I thought were effective, Dare. Book It, some of these things that really encouraged awareness, and like, so. You had a familiarity with the local police department would wave at them in parades and have these Derek t-shirts and things like that, so. Some of those that weren't state fundings, and then so are state funding for, and then other programs. Have kind of died off in some ways, but some do still exist.
Like a school-wide read.
School-wide, yeah, a read-a-thon.
Partnerships, the library and some of them.
Do you have any other questions about that one?
So on the third grade part that we was talking about, this is sort of the minimum, there's nothing that says we couldn't go.
In fact, that's probably too late.
That's too, it is too late, you're exactly right, it, third grade's too late.
Let's change it. What?
That first grade. So this is our, gonna be our policy, and it would be our policy to then make the, make the change by second grade, or is that. Wanted a year sooner, two years sooner?
Is first grade too soon, or is it?
I would, I would say that earliest possible opportunity that we would end the week. And so, if, if we. And some of this is even with screeners and diagnostics, that when students enroll and we screen them. You know, Deanna was working hard on like a dyslexia screener and things like that, so we can identify possible barriers. And so the earliest possible opportunity that we have is a district to serve a student, we would differentiate for them. So. And, and at, you know, at the very latest third grade, but at the earliest prefer, you know, like it's preferred and pushed throughout the district that we would.
There's some, I think some things to consider, one is. Yes, I think that a third grade is too late and that we already operate under that principle. But we also have kids coming into kindergarten that are beginning to just turn five and kids that are six. And so there, I do, I don't know if, maybe the end of first grade, what do you think Kevin, like if you're really gonna say?
Most programs recommend start, you start reading records or fluency testing first.
So by the end of first grade would be a reasonable time instead of third.
Would it be, I think it'd be a good idea to hear from the teachers, and what they, the K two five teachers, we don't know. What we could ask them.
Yeah, for sure.
The only part of that that would really screw things up was where it says that it's based off of the third grade statewide system, because there isn't a second or first grade statewide assessment.
You said in first grade.
So.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not statewide, okay.
No.
So we could put something in at Prosser that says we're gonna look for, you know, end of year one.
We already have the assessment, so you, you, you just basically not put the state. State assessment piece in, and, and it would be the. Maybe you just replace it with what's in procedures in district or classroom based formative or diagnostic assessments or other standard assessments, instead of the state assessment would make sense to me.
I'm good with that, but you guys.
And the principals could actually ask for feedback from the teachers and bring it, if they're warm, if they want to come, great, if they know the principals could bring them back.
Yeah. We can do, if. If that's the, so twenty one oh seven, we can do like many, a mini report, if you want that at this coming Wednesday's meeting, we can. Just poll teachers and say, what do you, you know, at different buildings. And so we don't necessarily have to move it to first reading right away, you can have like a mini report about, here's how you could shift it or something to consider. So that really, I think it involves, it involves people and they have skin in the game because they help give feedback on policy.
I think they have a good policy that fast policy.
Yeah. It's not gonna change one, so we can get it done as we can.
So it talks about providing interventions. For a plan that you're gonna be presenting, so this actually, we have another policy coming later in the RTI. Policy that actually impact will impact this. So just to. The responsibility.
So just to recap it for me, the teachers lower than third grade. They, they know some of their kids are struggling and they're recommending special help. But it's in third grade that we base it on state tests, but they are getting help before then, because the teachers are all there who has problems.
Yes. And, and this, it's in the law, the third, the third grade to, you know, and we were actually after report to the state K four. Students that are reading low grade level K four, so that's the kind of stuff on that third, fourth grade kind of thing.
If we were to leave the.
So Deanna, if we were to leave the comprehensive literacy plan as is, as a bare minimum. Take the net for grades, so to speak, and change the response to intervention. Take the net for grades, so to speak, and change the response to intervention to read the way we want it to, would that make more sense?
Say that again?
So the response to intervention, what we're doing.
Yeah.
If if we were to put the wording in there of how we wanted things to go as opposed to. I'm confusing, in fact, I'm confused now, see.
Well, I think that this is a, this policy should happen anyway, but I think what Kevin is is gonna open to is. Probably if if you move to a true R T I model, we need more resources than we have.
So that would be part of the, one of the bullets in this policy is the intensive improvement strategy options available. And so over here, eventually you're gonna be looking at the response to interventions model. Which has a high effect size of one, so if it's done correctly. So that is part of the response, what I'm saying is that that model is a response to this, or can be.
That makes sense?
How's it sound to you, Jody? I'm sorry, I just came from this. I agree with Kevin.
You guys anything else on the twenty one oh seven? So what I'm hearing is you guys are gonna discuss it with some teachers and uh. Bring it back at the next day of the board meeting and we'll beat it up for a few minutes and. Make a decision which goes along. So next on the list is the procedure twenty one forty five suicide prevention. Do you have any questions, concerns, statements?
Does everybody get training on this policy, I assume?
We will, yeah, we will have training on this specific policy, so it wasn't, it wasn't in place. Um, in spite of that, we still do, we have a kind of a professional development and compliance training tool called Safe Schools. That we do do um suicide prevention and awareness, boundary invasion, things of this nature. So if uh we were to encounter an incident that, or or even our teachers have knowledge of what that looks like. So if there are concerns, um those can be addressed or people can refer people or students on. Safe Schools is the, is the software tool that we use, and so it tracks everybody when they complete it.
So Safe Schools is a system that has multiple mandated trainings that we are required, required to provide in the suicide prevention. So the ones we're required for all staff to to view and love, they have a lot of tests that they have to do online, so. It's also a topic of part of, like, are youth mental health first aid and our social emotional learning trainings we've done, like all, there's more than just the.
World pathogen.
How many kids do you train?
Kids?
Kids. If anybody knows what's gonna happen, who's gonna go crazy, who's gonna do something dumb?
Right, but even that, like, they didn't have it last year, so.
No, I'd be guessing if I have. Components of this are in your character and the C L, your personality, that information, but to say there's a specific training for this, I, yeah, I wouldn't be able to.
Who do we use for the mental health first aid training?
Our youth mental health first aid um has been provided by, I I don't, I don't know the name, but the Thrive Coalition groups and the trainer. And I'm not sure it's always the same trainer, but they have specific certification they're required to have to provide that training.
I've had to sit through it for different parts of my job, I think it's outstanding.
It is, and teachers really appreciate it.
We're having a parent on that too. Yeah, I think that would be, there's, it was next week what that thrives doing, that's part of like.
Yep.
During the board meeting. It was hard to get the.
Yeah.
The trainer, and that was the only day, I mean, it's my daughter's birthday also, so I will be there also, so, yes, I know. But um so I won't be able to be there either, so it's one of those, like, we were. Subject to it. And it's hard, you can't hit everybody, yeah.
I do have some other questions. Do it each year, if they're able, you know, we're able to do that, then that way they hopefully people get some access to it.
What is the cost when you bring somebody in?
That's actually.
This is costing us nothing right now, what? Here we bring, it wants to get a grant.
Yeah.
And then uh it's basically costing us childcare and dinner.
Yes.
Well, what does it cost?
We're supporting that through title one with parent involvement.
What would it cost if we were to bring somebody in?
Um, so I I guess I can maybe use just the walls as an example. Um, we, I think we, it depends, it's like, you know, a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a day. And then we usually need to do supplies and stuff, it's not that that costs us, it's paying staff, if we're paying staff to attend, that's usually what's really expensive. Um, but I'm working actually just right now to provide um another layer of the social, emotional, mental, mental health type training. For August for our teachers, and we're having it for our paras in in June, so.
I was actually thinking like an after-school parents and.
Well, that's the one she's.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
That's for parents.
Parents, yeah. And it's for families and it's very similar on the training.
Travis been doing a great job of getting that, that the the stuff with the social media and all that, it's very eye-opening to parents. Let me hear some of those things, yeah.
So we had a couple of blanks we didn't fill in. Who was filled in?
Yep.
That's number one, on page twelve of forty seven, prevention resources and crisis response resources.
Is there anything else on this? These policies you want to bring up? Hear anything? So this will be ready for then first reading. Next meeting, correct?
We'll fill in the blanks then.
So let's jump down to C or another C, or is it saying, oh, no, it's just a different page, policy new procedure. Any questions on that? Maybe there was a question along the blanks. It's a nice play, falls out. Oh, okay, policy.
Yeah, that was on the procedure.
Yeah, on the R T I.
There's some news that was on suicide prevention.
Oh, suicide also, yeah. The crisis.
And R T I, I didn't have any.
So on uh, so on the R T I policy twenty one sixty three. Was there any questions or comments on that?
I wanted to go back to what Deanna said about interventions, that if we want to fully. Access what we can, that we need more services, so what kind of services do we need? How many intervention is, what kind of?
Yeah, it's it's. Go ahead, Kevin.
Training.
Training.
Around the R T I model and what it is and the components of it.
No, I think that's fine, because I, I think sometimes the perception might be. Uh by teachers that if a student's struggling with something, that somebody else has to fix that problem. And that's not necessarily the case. If a student isn't reading, somebody, I need to send this kid to somebody so they can read. If somebody can't do math, I'm gonna send them to somebody so they can do math, and the reality is interventions start in the classroom, so teachers need training.
Yeah, so uh it's broken down into tier two intervention, the supplemental intervention, tier three is intensive intervention. Those are actually both done in the classroom. Um, look, and the difference between the two, the supplemental is strategic grouping. So the kids that you're having in your group, you're working on skills or concepts that they're struggling with, not ability or level three. And then the intensive intervention is actually one-on-one, and that's the difference. So there's gonna, that's a, that's a shift. In our current practices and eventually our intervention teacher is gonna have to push in.
Yes.
At the inclusionary practices is eventually in two thousand.
Eight, two thousand twenty eight.
The, the entire policy is a, is a huge shift from what we're currently doing. And so it being that we're, you know, um that this is out of date, the policy also talks about standardization of curriculum. And assessment, um that we're really requiring teachers to use the, what they call guaranteed viable curriculum. So the model itself, um really, if we can sketch it really quick here, we're talking about, they draw kind of a pyramid. So you have hopefully the smallest number of kids who need the most intensive intervention, this is middle, um so they can either go up and down. And then hopefully the most, most of your kids at the bottom, the base of that triangle are on standard. And so basically, what we're talking about is the ability to adjust and maneuver. Um, eh, for the student and really marshal resources based upon their need. And so if we know that they're reading low, we start to say, all right, here's our most, you know, the most intensive need for kids. And here are their names, and this is who we're working with. But there's, there's a lot of components to this, um to really develop that model. When we adopt it, it won't be a shift that is done immediately and overnight. It's not one of those things that we snap our fingers and it's done, it's a shift that takes place over time, and like Kevin said, um it is research-backed. There's a number of different trainers and people, E S D might even be able to offer trainings around it. The de force for the people who, um so their writings kind of popularized it, but. Um, it'll be a shift that takes place over time and will need uh some, probably some support, some professional development around it. But it's really at the, at the core of it, we're talking about a systemic change. Um, and really how we look at our, our clientele or our students and really, you know, developing kind of a means-based approach for those students.
When are we hoping to introduce, introduce that?
Uh, I, I don't know that. I don't know that we've talked um about the model uh with, within the buildings. I do have, I do have DVDs on it, and so your DVDs are to do book studies, and that's an initial. First approach to like build awareness, and so you you build awareness, and then you talk about after that awareness. What are some best practice, right? So you move from best practice to common practice, so aware of the need. We know what best practice is, and then why aren't we doing it? And then that'll be kind of a monitoring effort to do it system-wide, and then we'll get to full implementation of everybody's doing it, everybody knows why we're doing it. Um, so we'll start after the policy's passed and then building that awareness. And, you know, either looking at consultants or looking at homegrown approaches that may even be more economical um to address it.
Is having someone from the E S D fairly inexpensive?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, they, the E S Ds tend to be, we're kind of a mid-sized district. But I can tell you, having worked in smaller districts, they are a lifeline. Um, they provide a professional development and it's for a pretty reasonable cost, and so um they help serve and they have pretty knowledgeable people off the kinds of work.
Currently at the high school, working with two members of the E S D. Jennifer Calgill is one of them uh that we work with for inclusionary practices with our E L population. Kelly Correio is another E S D that we're working on inclusionary practices for folks that in E L. Um, a lot of these discussions have taken place at the high school level and other levels um for pyramid of interventions. Talked about that a number of different times, but what we have found here, especially at the high school, I can't speak to the other buildings, but the high school is. Similar to what what Kevin talked about, but training for teachers and and when to implement that. But if you go into classrooms, you'll see significant differences um with the ability, teachers' abilities to group kids. And use grouping within the classroom um to meet the needs of those kids at the, for various levels within that pyramid. And so we're, we're building upon that, our inclusionary work so far at the high school has been outstanding for that reason. Because we pair up a special education teacher with a general education teacher, um and our special education teachers. Generally have a little bit more expertise in that area, um and so they're training our other staff members to be the same, that we've been working with the S D. One twenty-three, those two in particular, um we also have been, we've created the building intervention team uh that creates some parents and then thrive. One of the things that we realized is in creating a pyramid of interventions and implementing a pyramid of interventions. There's two different sides to that pyramid, you have the curricular side, and then you have the S D L side. And as we've been building this out, we're finding that the gaps in the social, emotional are significant. And the, what, what do we have available to the needs of students? On the pyramid of interventions for at the S D L side of it, the social, emotional learning side of it. And so that's, that's where our attention has turned and trying to develop those and establish the base, the base rather than. It's overwhelming when you think about, like what Mr. Ellis said, you know, this is over time. And I remember in my interview, he said, well, how soon can you implement these? Well, we can begin now. But we, and we have, we've begun that, but it takes time to build your, your base and then move up to those other levels. And so as we go, you know, we continue to do that, and there are some teachers that are better than others, there are. There are departments that are better than others and at at these specific things, and we continue to try and take that expertise and move it to build the house.
So we have a blank in here, the district will continue to increase its R T I efforts to reach district-wide information by the blank school year. So what are the principals and admin think? What's the goal?
Oh, I was, in a former district, they had it, we had the R T I model. And I'm just gonna give you an example of kind of a map of assessments, so I was in fifth grade, so you start with comprehension. If the student scored low in that, then you'd go and test fluency, if they scored low in that, then you go to work. And it keeps going down all the way to uh floating like awareness. But under each one of those is, if they end up passing that, that's kind of the level of the forecast, but there was a bank of strategies to use. Or uh intervention programs to be used in the classroom, so that's. We're just creating that flow, flow charts took several years. And getting those, those materials and building the capacity of teachers to be able to implement those strategies. And understand them well enough to use them in a small group. So that's just a small example, one piece of that model. But it is exciting, I'm just gonna say that.
Is twenty-three, twenty-four a realistic goal, or is that too ambitious?
To start?
Yes, to start implementing.
District one.
Is your correct?
Well, I think it's reasonable to start implementing parts, but there's, I don't think the whole.
I agree, I think it depends on how you word it, if you're talking about implementation, beginning implementation, absolutely. To suggest, to suggest that something would be completed, absolutely not.
The, the way the policy is, it's works, and the district will continue to increase its R T I efforts, so that means next year. To increase its efforts.
Yeah, we can, we can start next year, um or even this year, just to send the policy out and build early awareness this year. It, it's kind of that whole piece about, um, you know, like, when's the best time to plant a tree? Thirty years ago, right? Where, when's the next best time to plant a tree? Well, today, right? So um we can start to uh build awareness and start to talk about this. It, um, I think that in education, when we adopt policies like this, it's this issue about refinement. And so not only is it getting to full implementation, which can sometimes be a struggle. Um, because you're always gonna have people who don't wanna, you know, don't wanna participate, they don't wanna be a team player. But the idea that uh we're gonna try and refine it over time to become perfect, um which is a tough mark to hit. And you're always focusing on what you can do better.
So.
So I'd say twenty-three, twenty-four to begin, at least begin it and um build awareness, start. So I'd say twenty-three, twenty-four to begin, at least begin it and, um, build awareness, start to talk about. Twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, I myself. Any, anybody who wants to, but myself, Brian, Kevin, we come back with, we will. We'll do the work to fill in the blanks, but we'll highlight it in the colors so you can tell what we put in there.
Okay.
And, um, because once you take the blanks out and delete some of those stuff, it doesn't look so good. And we work through this so that it's more, maybe a little easier to discuss. Are you gentlemen, are you willing to help? Joe's like, no, they can do it.
And some of those immediate, the first one step, you have to have universal screening.
Yes.
And we, we have that in some areas, but not many others, but.
We definitely don't have a, um, a mental health screener.
No, not one that's consistent for us now. And then the next one is called quality core instruction or, or curriculum, so.
Yeah, so that's gonna be one of our other challenges as well, but we have to start, we start somewhere.
I do, I agree with Kevin, it's exciting.
So a question you just mentioned, yeah, to me, this policy is on curriculum. And understanding, we just mentioned mental health.
Because you technically like, like Brian talked about, when you're looking at what kids need intervention is, there's academics. And there's, there's the social emotional portion and some of that is as small as. Um, a teacher doing an intervention in class with kids who might not be getting along. And then some of that is a student is, um, feeling suicidal and what do they do? So districts have matrices, the teachers know what to follow, they know what to do. If, like, if, if a situation comes up, is it, like, where does that follow? And then what is the response? What is the response that we have available that we can offer to students? So it is academic, but when you look at, um, like. Like under the universal screening, they use the examples of reading, math, or expression behavior. There's some districts use behavior screeners as well. They may not do it with everybody, but they use a screener when a student is having referrals. There you go.
So following up on that mental health question, so what, what's the process right now or any interventions for like the little kids like? Elementary kids, if you have, they have like meltdowns repeatedly in class. Do you have an intervention screener for that or? You just tell them stop melting down?
Yeah, that doesn't usually work.
So there, um, we do work with a contract that was different professionals, so we have any Lionel ends. Who comes in and, um, he, he assists the district sometimes in developing approaches. Um, we've had, we've taken different stances and tried to accommodate, uh, students. Uh, we have students or at, at least one that I know of attending, uh, what's called New Bridge Academy, which is a. Like it's a smaller school developed, uh, within the E S D, um, for students with. Kind of high behavioral needs, um, E S D one twenty-three is developing one to call candy mouth. And so it just depends, we always try and either answer that within or find creative approaches, but. Um, sometimes there's not, you know, like, we do have to reach outside the district. If a, if a teacher is having issues, principals are gonna hear about it. Um, and it's not always appropriate to, I think the evaluation there is. Um, you know, what, what triggered this behavior and why? Was it somebody teasing the kid and the kid just snapped or? Or what is it? So kind of what, what Deanna is talking about and Brian referred to. You think along the lines of kind of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And so we're trying to meet those needs in order to get to really an environment that works for the student. And that we can meet theirs.
A lot of that work is done with by our counselors. But there are students like in, if you think about in the pyramid, teachers do, this is a simple, teachers do intervention. There's lessons kids get, there's things happen, that's in that kind of core. And then there's interventions that are done day to day for, you know, various things. But there are students and the issue might rise to the next level and maybe that is work, time with the counselors. Our counselors all have individual programs and training. They have things that they use specifically. Whether it's bullying, whether it's, you know, students breaking down, different things. But then there, there may be some kids that is, are beyond that. So, um, a lot of that's done with counselors.
Um, actually before the pandemic, we had a P B I S team, which would look at these. We would have your tier two interventions and tier three interventions, for example. First, you asked about early interventions. There was a program, Mr. Jones, our counselor at West Ram was using, it's called First Step Next. It's designed for those kids that are younger and they're having behavior problems. So that was an intervention we were using even before going to doctor and it's like Matt said, if that intervention wasn't working. Then we refer to special services for maybe additional testing. Um, we have a new round of counselors that have come in this year, at least at the elementary level, first year. So they're gonna need some of that training on these specific programs that we, we have so they could start to address those kids. But at the triangle, um, when we first started P B I S, was that several, five, four, five? Yeah, um, that, that was part of the R T I model, but it was specifically for behaviors. And this is just an example of like our building, so ninety percent of our kids currently have zero to one referrals. Those are the ones who are not really worried about it. It's that upper little red area that the high frequency kids. Um, and then most of the ones that maybe those interventions, I think all of us have. A tier two basic check-in and check-out with counselors and we monitor that on a daily basis with data. So.
The, um, not to bring up other kind of subtopic, but. City Bean has also created kind of sensory deprivation rooms that are quiet and have mellow lighting. And so students can, um, access that quiet space. Um, in fact, I know that she did it. She did it height, she's done it at West Ram before. Um, you know, and she has things in there that, um, they can focus on or will bring their mind off. But I think she might have even had like weighted blankets, um, for, for certain students. And so the room itself is filled with things that will help the student, um. Kind of calm, settle, settle their nerves and calm back down to where they can get into. A space where they can go back to class. Sometimes, and this has been an issue this year. We'll encounter kids that are, uh, they'll get off the bus and it's like they're on the edge. Um, I know that students, um, with autism spectrum disorder oftentimes. Uh, noises and light, um, really impact them. So riding a school bus to school, they get off that bus and actually could be on the verge of like a trigger, right? And so through no fault of their own, right? And so that's really, she's worked hard at trying to create environments for students, um. That are accommodating and that they can reset with it. So, um, I kind of appreciate that, Joey.
Let's see, I, I, if I don't like, we've used that this year, she's been wonderful. She's been, um, she was able to come in. About halfway through the school year, maybe a little bit, um, two thirds through the school year. And it's been great for us. We have a lot of kids that are just, they just need a break. And it's just ready, they're about to melt down. So we've implemented a couple of different things. But one of, um, the things that we have is her room and she calls it the unicorn room. And they get a little keychain that has a unicorn and they, it's just one of those things that the teachers know, if this kid has it, they're able to come down. And the kids don't take it, they really don't take advantage of it. It's not a, but she's been able to connect with some kids that. I haven't been able to connect with, and it has worked really well. We sent, it sent Chris to a different district this year, my counselor, this year to look at some of the calming rooms. And, um, I just saw a Legends grant. I don't know if it's for that one. I don't know. I wrote two, but they won't tell me which I got, but, um. For, to buy stuff for, in the new building, for him to have a classroom, but it is, it's that calming.
And it's refocusing?
It's a refocus, like it's a calm room. It just comes in and they just, because what we're, what I'm seeing, and I, I don't know, maybe, I, I believe it's. All, but what we're seeing is that the kids are just, just, I mean, I had fifth grader underneath the desk yesterday and I couldn't get him out. You know, and it was in the office and he was just, you know, so they just need that. Break. And so we're trying to provide different, um, opportunities for them. And that was the information.
Guys, anything else on, uh, twenty-one sixty-three?
So I'm, I'm, I don't know that this one will be back at the next board meeting, so we're gonna need to do some work on this, so maybe what, what happened.
But we can report back.
Yeah, that's right. Just because I, we want, I think we want to think about this really carefully as we craft it. And I just know what my schedule looks like for the next four days, and I don't know if I can get these two gentlemen together, so.
There's a lot of.
Oh, there's a lot and we want to make sure that it's done well, so.
You might even come back, when you come back with a guest and like a timeline guest. I mean, obviously, a couple of years is too, too soon to implement everything, but you know, what, what is a, what you gain from a timeline?
Ready, let's move on to policy, you know, five. Okay, this is our last, um, this is the last one that's essential. So this is, um, model policy, um, around O P M A and public records. Um, so we're, we're doing, like I said, we're already doing some of these practices. In fact, one of the moves that we made was we trained all, um, all building administrators, not only on O P M A. Um, as well as public records act and retention. And so that was really beneficial. They got to print out the certificate. We actually scheduled a meeting. Um, with the state attorney general, um, and we were able to do that via Zoom. And, um, so our administrators got certificates, but, um, also as board members, um, we had sent that link out. And so just to keep everybody, um, trained, and then I think the other piece of this is to keep current. Um, do we need to think about that every, every year or two, uh, revisiting it? So we're, we're keeping current and that'll go with, that's with administrators too, that everybody, I mean, it's good for everybody. It doesn't take a lot of time.
What is current law?
Records officer has to do it every year annually, the eight-hour training. And then as board members, you know, it's in the policy, you know, the law is ninety days after taking the oath up office.
But if you've already had it, I mean.
Yeah, you're not, I don't know that there's a requirement to update it, but it's good for, I think it's good to cycle back. Jeannie brought her certificate in the other day to the district office and so. Yeah, so, um, but we have, I think, so in the, uh, that we can. So are we all okay with the way this reads?
Yeah.
So this is a, to be ready to come back. Oh, two district, six sixty-one oh two, policy procedure sixty-one oh two, district fundraising activities. Start with the policy part. Questions, comments, concerns? Sorry. Yeah, this was the one draft that we had the conversation at one of these study sessions around GoFundMe and about the ability for. Employees to, um, do some fundraising efforts in order to, um. Have what, you know, kind of the, the wants put in their classroom, that they would commit to what they needed. And then if there were certain wants, um, that they could always fundraise.
I think GoFundMe is prohibited. GoFundMe, Snap rate, and they go to Kickstarter are prohibited because those sites take a percentage. And so the teachers that came to me with it, um, specifically wanted to turn to grants that are available online. And being able to access those grants and being able to do it. And you have to pull up the form and get it approved. Whatever's acquired belongs to the school, it doesn't, um, yeah. It has to be approved and there's no percentage taking.
Yeah, it's not intended, um, the policy is about fundraising, but the actual form is around those types of things versus like. Um, the volleyball team's gonna do these A S B fundraisers and all. It's not, I mean, this defines the fundraising, but they're not, they don't need people to fill out a form. For that, it's like, we're gonna go on donors choose and we're gonna see if we can get new volleyball carts if people contribute money. Cause donors choose is one that's allowed, so it's not an exchange of money and they're, but, um. Yeah. It's a, it's a good start. I don't know, high school, you guys do the most fundraising probably. Did you have any? Negative feedback about it or questions or people? I heard there was people talking about, oh, if you're gonna do fundraising, you gotta know this. That's not actually accurate. I heard that was a conversation with some teachers, uh, that I just heard that by offhand, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's gonna change a lot of practice of what we do for A S B, but.
As I said, some questions in the procedure, would that be later?
Yeah.
Cause I'm a curricular.
He does these things.
Yeah, I'm a curricular program that, we're going on the live parade Saturday. It's a graded event. It's four thousand dollars for a hotel. So I'm confused, I'm number two on this, students not be charged a fee to enroll. In a curriculum-based activity that involves a district fundraising program. I'm number two on this, students not be charged a fee to enroll in a curriculum-based activity that involves a district fundraising program. Where is the, cause I know like A S B is not, you know, they define not co-curricular and. It becomes a gray area, but I, I guess I'm, I'm just concerned from my part, where do I fit in on that? Is that intended to affect what I do, for example, with that?
No, we had a question about library pieces too. Um, and so there, there's two, I think when we talk about distinguishing and differentiating. One of the things that sets apart A S B funds from, uh, from these funds would be that it's student, it's student-directed, it's too much. Right, so they're actually going out and selling, um, this one is adult or teacher-led. Um, so I think that's, uh, that's an area to distinguish. I think that one of the other areas is that, um, there is, uh. There is no such thing, or in, in A S B law, there's no, no such verbiage as co-curricular. It's curricular and extracurricular. And so that's one of the separation pieces there is that we're classifying it in one or the other. And so in both columns, we're saying it's either teacher letters, too much, and then it's either curricular or extracurricular. And so that would tip it one way or the other when we start talking about, um, the legal uses of those funds. Do you have any?
It's a graded thing, then that's really a curricular, a district expense.
I read as, you don't have to pay to be in a class, so like, you know, a band kid doesn't have to pay twenty-five dollars.
I see.
Yeah.
Right, though like would you require them to buy a band shirt? Because that's their uniform for certain.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's been different fees that like C T E's charge for wood shop or art or some of those things. For, um, supplies and so we're considering it kind of in the same.
A hotel for the live? We got a charter bus one year. I thought that was very exciting.
We had a lot of parents that were really concerned about drivers being awake at three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
By the time we're getting back.
It's the late one.
My kids survive, right, yeah. No, they, they had used hotel for about the five years before I came on and. That was, we got parent input on that again, that was strong. Strong preference to do that. We had some parents that sponsored some kids that couldn't afford to do it, so.
Do they still all stand on the bus at the end of the parade?
Depends, depends how late it is. We're, we're at the end of the parade this year, so.
Actually, I'm gonna be.
Uh, we wind up at seven forty-five, but we probably won't step off till nine or nine fifty.
When I was in high school, my, or actually when I was in elementary school, my babysitter fell asleep on the. Fell asleep on the way, driving from Sunnyside High School to home and died after the Spokane, I went. Because it was like three or four in the morning when she was driving home. Bring the food down.
I have a question on the, the bold, bold point three right below that on the procedure. Can you clarify the, the program will not be created or continued that will require the allocation of district funds and if programs specific. Resources are insufficient or exhausted.
You know, I have a fundraiser, the districts on the top for.
So we're gonna start a new class with a, a new club with a design widgets, and then we offer it, set everything up, and then we run out of money. And say, well, district, you got paper, and the policy does talk about them a lot, that it's. Whatever they do can create an additional burden on the district or finances.
Good, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, it's, there's a, it's a little bit of. Policy talk in there.
There's numerous spots in here where it says with appropriate authorization superintendent revisits me.
Yeah.
I would think it should say and, as in. I mean, I don't want it to be like bird and cats, but I think there should be multiple eyes and look at any. Uh, proposals, any rejections, any, anything, not just, not, not just you, not just any one person. I, I don't, I don't know how we get there, like I said, I don't think there needs to be, you know, twenty seven people in room for everything, but. I, I would think two or three people, and then come up with some sort of a building admin, teacher, now, or some variation thereof for all of these things. And it's, there's a lot, there's even, there was like the sale of, of, uh, things that kids make. You know, all of those were approved by. Superintendent or president, I think it needs to be and.
I think a lot of our fundraising processes, when they're actually doing a fundraiser. The, I think the implication there is that that's the final word. So there's a process like ASB has to go through their plan, then it has to come to the ASB, then it goes to our ASB director, then it got, you know, and then it comes to the board. So I don't, I don't know if maybe that's like, that's the final word. Yeah, that's like the final, like the final, there's somebody that has a final say, I guess, it's kind of what that's intended to be, but there could be a different way to word it.
Well, specific to grants, cause a lot of times grants require action. That you have, you know, it's a two way street, they'll give you the money for something in return.
Yeah.
Whether that's data, or, you know, whatever that is, and so. Really determining whether that fits within the scope of work that we wanna take on. Um, it is Craig said, uh, you know, the, the burden, um, what is the burden on the district before we agree that.
Yeah. If there is no product, you are the product, so. And this, as far as you mean to. Agree or sign this form right now. I just, I didn't, I didn't want it to be. Sort of a one person, you know, thought complex you can have, and you can't. I just think there needs to be, you know, not, not to mention if, if something. I mean, I don't know how many times I've looked at something and read or understood in a certain way and create a look at, say, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, you missed this, and. So I, I just think that's real important. Just my two cents.
At least that I'll talk about it, I can.
Always beside and doesn't mean, the difference in an and doesn't mean.
Yeah, even, I guess a multiple, multiple eyes, it's all.
Yeah, maybe you just, yeah, that's easy.
Anything else on sixty one oh two? Alright, so that should be with a couple of minor changes, ready for first reading as well?
Selena, can you fix those and as a music?
Okay, that would be awesome.
So the thought was that we could include this maybe. Right after, if there's no policy after the conflict interest policy. Or I think, I think we had talked to Sean Mopery, he talked about attaching it to. The conflict interest policy is kind of an extension of it, so. So this is just, yeah, it's a draft, um, there is no, there is no procedure. I kind of tinkered with a procedure a little bit. Um, that may come later, but as far as the procedure really was about administrative functions as far as. People reporting, um, to the district that there was a conflict. So.
So the one, the thing I had about this, um, and it does spell things out relatively well. Was if, for instance, your wife, although she is smarter than you, wasn't smarter than you, she was Craig's secretary and sucked. Uh, Craig's still gonna be afraid to.
Sure.
So I think there needs to be some lateral, uh, cannot be a direct.
Yes. Yeah, also. Their, their direct conflict of interest, and then their indirect conflict of interest that may come about, so. Yeah, I, I didn't. I didn't really, uh, write those in, it, it, it's a complex. Complex idea to talk about, like, there, there's influence, right? People hold influence, and depending on where they're at in the organizational structure hierarchy. They may have influence in different areas and budget in evaluation. So, but I just, if we're gonna go this far, you might as well just make sure it's on private.
Okay. And I, I would say something, I'm not sure how you word it, something as, as nothing more than a lot of, or. You know, a whole different department or something to that, so. Anything else, guys?
Do you want me to try and draft some language, potential language on that, and we can revisit it?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Uh, both a procedure and maybe indirect. I mean, there, I mean, the. People always hold the ability, especially the higher up. I think they're, they are in the organization to say, like, I need to recuse myself, or I need to, I'm biased in this situation, so I need to step out of this, or. We need to have somebody else supervise this, so.
I know, one time, since like forever ago, we, we gave an opinion that we were. As small districts, a lot of small districts find themselves in that position where.
That's true.
And at one point, we, we looked into that, and they had said, uh, it looked like we were following.
Yes.
Already following as, as well as could be expected.
Yes, so I'm doing research around this, um, I did reach out to, I had referred to early, um, Abigail Westbrook, it was, and so she's there. She's their attorney and does write, um, policies, but then she had said that really their policy was written around direct conflict of interest. And that it's not totally uncommon for the smaller, the smaller you get as a district. Oftentimes, the more family involvement there is, um. So she said it's, it's not completely uncommon to have spouses work in the same district, or, so for instance, like. My dad was a principal, my mom was a paraplegic, they were in different buildings. Or we've had, um, you know, like instances where somebody's a principal and. Maybe their spouse something, really, from time to time, in different, different, um, roles, so.
See, I would actually think the second one would actually be pushing a little bit, because at some point, something could happen. You know, however, you know, like, when you were here, your dad was over there, it's totally different, totally different, excuse me, wrong, your dad, totally different gig, but. You know, for instance, if I was in Brian's position and my kid's teaching down the hall, so theoretically something could pop up, and, you know, that. I, I have to step out, or.
Yeah. Yeah, that, um, that's the big thing is recognizing the relationship, and if there's any doubt whatsoever. And, and so that was part of, in the procedure, we had kind of a reporting process of somebody saying, these are the relationships I have within the district. You know, and then. I'm gonna do my best to, you know, do this, or this is my job, and this is what I'll do in order to. Yeah.
You can actually just add that to our application.
Yeah.
Right.
And then the, the next question I would have for you guys is, uh. Are you okay with adding this to the current, you know, so it would be conflict with slash, that it is not coming up in a whole new gig, just adding this to the current language, yeah?
Does conflict of interest deal more with financial conflicts? Like, if you have a financial investment business, you can promote that to the district?
I think you have two pieces when we read it last.
Yeah.
It's a small bullet.
Yeah.
I have, and I have no problem with adding it, I think it puts the district at safer position, we do have a lot of family members, right now, we have a vice principal. His husband is in their building as a teacher, and I think that's a supervisory role, I think. I mean, that's something that, I think, this is a policy would address if another teacher said, well, this guy's getting all the best class votes, and clearly the reason is this, and he. Like, well, we have a policy.
Yeah. Yeah, with, within that, kind of. It, as you were talking, I was kind of processing. Possibilities within procedure of developing. Um, an anonymous recording system, and so that can be intimidating, I think, sometimes for people to say. You know, or call out the emperor and say, listen. You have no clothes. Yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so some sort of reporting system that could be anonymous, if somebody does feel like there is a conflict, just so there's no. There's never fear of, uh, like a retaliatory action, something like this.
I think that's a good idea, I can't imagine how it would feel to not be a sponsor, and to move here to teach. And then have an issue, but then find out, okay, well, they're related, and they're related, and they're in laws, you know, and those are all situations.
Well, you know, right off the bat, bold point A is most disclosed. So if we have, you know, if we have the black and white, and we have, uh, the, a, a. Conflict of interest, then they can just have the discussion, and it's, you know what? You two are in the same building, this isn't gonna work, so this is what we're gonna have to do to make it work, if you're not cool with it, we apologize, but. I mean, I, I think those are the discussions that have to be made.
Like years, years ago, when we had the principal. And the secretary that married, they had to move to a different building, one had to be in a different building.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with making it part of, of conflict of interest, but I, I did wanna state that in the years I've been in the bridges a lot. Our school district has benefited from spouses that both taught, or a mother and daughter that were fantastic teachers. You know, so as a small school district, it has been a benefit us, because that's what we get a lot. You know, a teacher comes in, and the spouse happens to be a teacher bingo, we get two.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and so, um. The, as you talked about the benefit, the research, um. Kind of points to the more stability that there is in the district, that the better the district performs, so people who are there and develop their craft over career. Usually that district really benefits from those people who stick in, instead of having a revolving door, revolving door is kind of a symbol of, um. It can be an early warning symbol of like decline, and or it's tough to get beyond that, that, what you have people leaving and constantly. You know, leaving the organization to really try and convince them to stay, so.
And I also think, uh, on B. There needs to be some sort of a minor exemption, like we have a problem on the spot, and it happens to be somewhat of a conflict, but if it's not, maybe a long term. You know, whether it's a counselor or something like that, that maybe there's something we can do to kind of overlook temporarily, but.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that would be, somebody else would evaluate that.
Yeah. Yeah, if you guys are all cool with that, we'll have them, um. Make a couple of changes, present it to someone more time, and then, uh, once we okay, we'll have it added to, um. Oh my gosh, conflict of interest. Somewhere else. Alrighty, so, oh, this is. Uh, sexual health and social emotional learning requirements.
I knew it would be a fun one.
I've already gotten two texts on it.
I, I'm sure, so, um, just, just a, a couple of things, so we are required to implement a new sexual health and social emotional learning standards. And. I think the thing that's important for people to know, I know there's a lot of controversy surrounding some of this. We still do have some local control on certain parts that we choose to teach or not to teach, um, that's always been the case. Our teachers don't all have. Current curriculum to actually teach this in the way that it's required, so that's a little bit of an issue for us, it's not a huge issue because it's a very small part. I think, uh, you know, there's one curriculum for middle school that this whole portion is seven lessons. Um, so it's a smaller part of our health curriculum, um, like I said, there has been a lot of controversy. Uh, around this, parents do have the option of opting their children out, if they don't want to be a part of it. And, um, so I just wanna preempt that, because I do know that there's, there's people that, um, have struggled with this. I wanted to make sure you were all aware, I'm gonna have a parent meeting, so parents can come in and ask questions and see the standards. I do also know there's been a lot of misinformation put out about these standards. It's, um, important that, that people hopefully read, you know, there is the, I included the FAQ document. As well as, um, just the sexual health and the social emotional. Learning standards, K three, the changes were in social emotional learning, and a fourth grade and up, that the changes came more. Bigger changes for the sexual health portion, the other requirement is that, that changed is. Um, and this has never really been an issue, is that the standards, this, this, these, these topics have to be taught twice in a great band. So for middle school and high school, for most schools, that's certainly an issue, because they've had help every year, or they're talking about how they count two out of the three years. High school, they had help one time, and that's it. So, um, the high schools are making some adjustments, have made some adjustments so that they can, uh, teach content twice. Um, just through some presentation type activities versus a whole other class of help. I'll give you an example of some, you know, kind of local decision making, and so. I'm sure that, uh, that people appreciate this, but on, um, number four, under eighth grade, it's on. It's on page thirty three of the board packet, but thirty two of the standards. It says the steps to using a condom correctly, well, that's actually been in the standards for a long time, but we don't actually teach that in eighth grade. We haven't taught that because we had a committee that came together and made the decision that that was not a topic that felt that was appropriate for us to teach our eighth graders. Whether it is or it's not, that was the decision that was made, but I'm like Linda Yule, so. Twenty year plus, probably years ago, so, um. We're going to have a committee, and, and that's one of the reasons with the parent meeting, because I'll be able to. You know, we'll have parents that'll feel strongly one way or the other, and that'll be a place where people can have opportunity to be in, uh, to. To volunteer to be a part of the committee, and it'll be, um, work we'll do in the fall, even though we're implementing next year, but work we'll do in the fall. With our, um, parents, our health teachers, and our nurses, and our counselors, because. The, these, this content, and there's other, uh, content, is not just taught by, by one person in a school, so at the. At the elementary, the counselors teach part of lessons that have to do with health and bullying and personal safety. Um, at the, um, middle school and high school, they have character strong, there's things that are within the standards, not necessarily the standards. But in the social emotional part, that is done through character strong with all the students, so, um, but I know that the sexual health portion is the big portion that is what people have struggled with. So. It is, it's required by the state, but again, we have some flexibility in what we do, and parents have choices.
No, I, I will say from a little bit of research I've done, of course, my wife's a school nurse, so. I, I know a lot of these things already. I, I know a lot of these things already. There's a lot of it that I totally approve of, but there's a lot that I would have a. Really hard time sleeping at night, uh, knowing that I did approve of it. That said, um, Kenwood went through a cherry pick a lot. I don't know how much. But I'm guessing we're probably gonna follow the same approach, because there are things in here that are very smart and boring and unnecessary.
Sure. So obviously, we probably want kids to understand that the changes they go through during. But, um, we also have parents that say, I wanna teach that to my kids, so I'm going to have my student participate in that. So, um, yeah, this, that will be the process, the work of the committee. And then once I have the people who will be part of the committee, I'll bring that to the board, because it's, it's kind of curriculum adoption, but kind of not. Um, because it's really about refining in the elementary and we're not. But they have actually have the, a current curriculum that is acceptable. For using lessons, they don't use all the lessons that address all these standards, so some of that has to be addressed. But we do have, you know, places where you don't have appropriate curriculum, um, for the teachers to. To be able to teach what they're required to teach. So, yes, in, in, um, yeah, refining, making some local decisions. Is certainly something that the committee would be able to do, and, um. And we bring that back so that the board would have that information as well, and. Again, it will be controversial, so you will get phone calls and you will have people, you know, telling, telling you things, but. We're not just, we're not just gonna walk out and say, here you go, everybody has to do this.
Finish yours. I was gonna say, so far, everybody I've talked to, you know, come to me, we wanna hear your voice. And I can say that to anybody that brings that.
What you could do to parents is, you could encourage parents is to contact me if they're interested in me doing it. That'll be great.
Do that.
Yep.
And then on the.
Um, I'm actually gonna introduce it to parents before school's out. I'm gonna do a meeting before school's out. I wanted to wait till I talked to the board. Today I talked to, I met with the PE helping, um, the nurses and the, um, counselors. Earlier this week, and so I'll meet with parents so we can introduce that to them and let them know that we're gonna go through a process, and if they wanna be part of it, then they're welcome to be part of it.
Okay, so my question is you list, you put all these charts. Basically, this whole chart in here of all the different grade levels, different topics. Are you, is, is this something that's implemented currently?
So.
By example?
This is, these are the adopted standards, the new ones that we need to implement.
Okay, so I have, I have a slight problem with that. Looking at kindergarten through third grade. If I go to the comprehensive sex health law. Uh, the actual RCW. In bullet point eleven. So I guess it'd be subcategory B. It says comprehensive sex health education for students, K three three must include, must be instruction in social mo. Now, this is the law. So the way I read this, and I could be completely wrong, but K three three only requires social emotional learning.
Yes.
So in the, this chart, you have anatomy and physiology, growth and development, reproduction, HIV. Prevention. Self-identity, which I don't think is included in any of the law. And I think like, Andy said, there's parts of this that I think are really good, but there's parts of this that I don't think. Need even be a discussion. So I guess that was one thing I wanted to clarify. Is this chart something that you're gonna discuss implementing the whole process with this parent group, or is it just gonna be? Specific?
So I'm not sure.
Are you using this whole chart? As part of curriculum adoption?
So, so what we will discuss, so basically what the state is saying, and that is, they didn't change anything in K three. That's what they're saying, that I do feel there's some. Some, some slight changes in the wording and in the structure, that the primary changes are just in the social emotional health standards. And they're saying that this is, really isn't a change from before. Um, but when we did this before, well, well, before my time, at least I've been told, because I, I wasn't a part of it. Is we will still, we will go through and, and discuss all of these, because it would be part of the whole process. So even though they're saying, we, we didn't change anything for, for K, K three. I, I personally don't have a record of what they did for K three twenty years ago. So even if this isn't new, we're gonna go, we will act, we will go through and discuss all of these things.
Even though, so, even though it's not required in K three three, you're gonna discuss.
Well, but we actually, so we actually do, I mean, some of these things actually probably, I mean, that would be the. Nurses and the counselors here to talk about these things, but we do like kindergarten on page thirty-one of the board packet. Safe and unwanted touch, we, we do that, have done that for years.
And that's, and that, of course, is one of the ones that I think.
Yeah.
Bold degree is, you know, is, is, is great. That's something I want my granddaughter to be taught.
Yeah, recognizing ways to express your feelings. That's one of the things we, we've been talking about with kids melting down, what's appropriate ways to express your feelings. So many of these things are already being taught, but there are some things I'm sure at the time they chose not to teach. I can tell you ten years ago. Or twenty years ago. Some of these things were, I, I can't, they, they couldn't, they couldn't have been on there. I can't imagine that they are. But I do think that, so there is, there are still standards, and there always have been.
And I think the other part of that, Jason, is, is some of, some of the standards are not in effect, that they've been. Written in as law, but they're, they're not, if they don't even come, come into like twenty-three, mid-twenty-three, we're supposed to adopt this crap via law. Or it says we will.
Is that a different law than that?
I have no idea.
No, that's.
It's, uh, I got it off of one of those OSPI things, but. It's that one.
So I see that, so page twenty-eight of the board packets, the kindergarten. First grade under reproductive is developmentally appropriate outcomes first. Appear in grade two, so there's gonna be no reproduction talk, so grade two, and then it says, understanding living things can reproduce. So that could be. Muddies make babies.
Could be exciting.
And then, grade three, understand humans can reproduce, okay, humans can reproduce, but we're not explaining to third graders. Details of how.
No.
Life cycle.
Yeah, life cycles did, not.
Well, and that's, so that's where we all absolutely have to be involved in this as well as parents. I mean. If you're not gonna put the time in to go through and help, then you've got no room to complain at the end.
Would this be, I know we mentioned it, I think we mentioned it at the last meeting, Andy, about the parent committee.
This would, in fact, I was just thinking the same thing. I would give this one a column. See if they want to have a couple of volunteers come in too.
I think it'd be good to that community.
Yeah, absolutely. What we could do is pull all the curriculum and try and crosswalk it, say this is the current state. This is what's kind of proposed, and so then, I mean, there's local control. And local decision making for purpose, and that purposes. To tailor something to address your needs or the needs of your community. And so, um. Yeah, I, you know, Peggy said this before, that. Um, we do live in crosser, and there's a tendency to be conservative. Um, or, or at least in some of these things around sexual health, gender identity. Expressing, you know, expressing gender, all those different things, and so to really find out, um. Where the, where the feds posts are. Um, so that we can make local decision making, kind of, as you, and I can ask Tracy Pierce about Kenwick and what Kenwick is doing.
And I don't know how severe they got, but I was told they did kind of go to cherry pick what they will and will not.
So every district is, is, is required to, um, uh, have parent input and have a process for parents to give input on what's being taught, so.
I have thesis of this that. Were required to offer, and are there pieces that we can? To pull out?
Technically, when you're going through and making some local decisions, that's what you're doing. And that was done, like I said, twenty years ago, um, and it's the same idea, and that being said. Even so, you know, however many years ago, the whole HIV and AIDS, we have the mandatory HIV and AIDS training. Well, i- it's still mandatory, it's still on the books, and it's not that it's not important, but it's almost become like a non-factor. We still required to do it. For a parent, by law, and I'm not sure how super, how sticky we are on it, but. By law, parents are supposed to review that curriculum before they sign the child out. That's the law. For this, that's not the case. The parent doesn't even have to review it. They can choose to sign the child, they can choose to refuse it with, um, with. Without even reviewing it, so, but I, I, my hope is that we're gonna educate parents and make sure we have a good awareness of parents know what kids are getting. And we make good decisions around what we are providing to students and providing, because there are a lot of kids that need this from us. They will need that, and, um, you know, it's, um, it is a sensitive subject, and we will be, we will be sensitive.
We, we had talked about, um, just right before the safety and security meeting. Procers also had a track record in the history of maybe including counterpoints, and so, um, the idea about. Prevention and, um. The limitation of STDs, things like this, that birth control. The Procer School District also taught around abstinence. And they did the whole, whole similar thing, and I think it was like middle school science around. Uh, theory of evolution, they also offered intelligent design. Um, or, or at least spoke, spoke about that, so there was kind of a point counterpoint about like. There are different schools that thought that, um, so that people wouldn't be alienated, and then, uh, towards, uh. Towards like sex education specifically, you've always had the right to opt your student out. And so at the end of the day, if that doesn't work for you, you as a parent can say, um, I'm gonna opt my student out. So.
We have a lot of students, or students that don't take it stupid.
No.
Because when my kids were in school, there were a couple of families that.
There, every building has a, a few, a few parents that opt out. Um, some, it, but sometimes it's one, sometimes it's five, but I, when I asked yesterday. In all of the buildings, um, like for the HIV and AIDS, and, you know, like human growth and development, I think there was a total. Of less than a dozen in all of those. So it's not very many.
My folks opted, you know, until I, I think that I, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, until I was in high school. And, uh, basically, uh, I, I told my parents that like, it's almost embarrassing that I'm continuing to be opted out, but. Yeah, so, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, before that time, I was always, um, you know, it, it was a discussion about like, well, do you have any questions around that? And of course, you know, I didn't really want to talk about that with my parents, and, and even. Um, knowing that at some stage in life, um. You know, there's, there's things you learn in class, and then there's the reality of the world, right, and so. Ju- just knowing that, you know, so many of our students, and Andy kind of said that so many of our students are so innocent. Um, in the, you know, early years, and so some of these are very adult level conversations. Um, you had said, you know, I'd be a.
There's, there's things that if somebody said this to my granddaughter, I'd, it'd be an ass whooping immediately. So, I mean, I can understand how people would be, but then again, there's other conversations that are in here that are age appropriate and very necessary.
Yeah, and, and I think that as a public, as a public school, um, one of the best things we can do is provide options. And so that's, that's why we're here, we're serving a diverse, uh, group of students and diverse, diverse group of parents, and so. To say we have options on the table here.
Well, at a bare minimum, we wanna have a lot of voices to come in and help put this together, not just, you know, us five and deal with it.
Yeah, so I'll be putting out, um, a, a letter, like a notice to parents. I'm inviting them to a meeting and also indicating them that if they, after attending the meeting, or, or if, if they're not able to. That, um, to let me know if they wanted to be part of the committee, and, um, you know, we'll meet not at a time if we have to, if we have a lot of parents, it's okay. Um, it's controversial, but we've dealt with some controversial stuff before.
I like the frequent last question.
It's helpful, um, that's from the OSPI website, there's more.
The only, the only thing I'd throw in is for any parents, and, and I'm gonna invite the parent committee that we talked about last, last meeting. Or anybody you guys invite, um. We definitely want different opinions, but I don't want our arguments.
Yeah.
If everybody can't be civil and, and work towards a goal, then.
We'll have, we'll have norms that we'll operate under, so. I think people are, we'll be fine.
I can get just as loud as anybody that doesn't change anything.
Change a thing.
Only, only one more, guys, or is there anything else?
This will be fast.
Alright, so all we have left is H, art, arts, adoption expense.
So at the last board meeting, when we talked about, you know, Matt put up the list about. How to save money now, and one of the things that was on there is curriculum adoption, and. Um, we do a lot of work throughout the year with the, the purchase and those, that happening at the end. Um, to prepare for the next year, and so I said, wait, 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 I have my arts committee, they've been working so hard, and they have done fantastic work. With district alignment, K twelve, but they, um. I, in the things that are on here that are curriculum, would still have to go through the normal process of going to the district construction materials committee. Having the two-week review for parents and community coming to review them, and then come back to the board for final approval. But our, our arts have been, um, they, they don't have the funding that they need. To maintain what they're doing, and they need some money to do some replacements, some improvements. The, the timpani set is, is one of my favorite stories. Mr. Norris came. Because I asked if any of our teachers, arts teachers would be able to come in case there were questions about why this is so important, but. Um, his, tell him your story of your timpani. Do you guys all know what a timpani set is?
That was my.
Okay, I pulled up a picture because I thought, so these.
Is it the same timpani set that was there twenty-five years ago?
Yeah, story. So the timpani are kettle drums, um, and they're stamped on the pedal, which you adjust the notes with. With WFL, which in nineteen forty-seven became the Ludwig Drum Company. So they're seventy-five years old at least. And they no longer work, I'm sure, I don't know if they worked twenty-five years ago. Um, they don't hold the pitch, you're supposed to be able to adjust the notes. And they're, they creak as you do it, one, you have to literally hold your foot on it to hold it to that note. And it holds kids back from being able to hit their potential on what we're doing. Is ultimately, I, they can't audition for all-state percussion. Because, A, we don't have four of them, and all the audition materials require four, but also, they can't do what they need to do on that. I don't have any that are ready to do the all-state auditions yet, but within a couple of years, I hope to, so.
And that was just one piece, um, there, a, a consistent curriculum, our K five actually. Um, has, is, is aligning in that we, you know how we offer music at Riverview, but art at Heights? They have agreed, they're both, that all of them are going to teach music and art, so that kids aren't getting both. Um, we have some aligned consistent, um, um, standards that they're gonna use for all the schools. So that as they go up and say they are rolling into middle school art, that, um, Mrs. Brian would know that they already know. The elements of art, and they've been taught it, and they may not remember it, but right now, they're teaching in the elements of art every, in every school. And the kids are like, I didn't know that, well, so there's, there's, they did so much work, they've done such a fantastic job, and we, we actually have documents that we would. Give to a parent and say, this is what they'll learn in music or art or, or drama, and. Um, this is where your student is as a musician, this is their. This is their, a C, if this is, they want to get better and be a D, or the student wants to know that.
They have a book transfer?
Uh huh, everybody. And there's some things that, like, that were probably maybe brought up in construction. Like for instance, the wall art cases, there's wall art cases at the, at the old high school. But it was something that either Connor didn't think of, or maybe wasn't, you know, I don't know. But we have no wall art cases. We don't have a way other than like a tax strip to display any art. No 2D art, no 3D art, and art should be displayed. And then there's things like the middle school doesn't currently use plaster or canvas, like some startup supplies for them to start some new using, to do some different mediums in art. As well as, you know, we started a guitar program fantastically popular. We have no guitar racks. Those are just laying all over the band room. Trying to keep them safe, but there isn't a way to put them away safely. We have some storage, but not enough for as many kids as we have participating. So I have more than this amount of money, but this amount of money would allow us to complete the art adoption and move forward. And they've been working on it for three years.
And they do a fantastic job.
And this is not going to impact, you have this money right now.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not going to impact the budget, the reductions that we're worried about. Okay?
No. Well, I mean, the $59,000 wouldn't be there to carry over for next year. But this is like some of what we talked about. We have to put materials in teachers' hands. They have to have what they need to do the good, we want them to do a good job. And we have to give them tools. So.
$100 drama gets from the.
I made him put that there. He, he, here's the thing for drama. Is they have a ton of scripts. They have like a lot, a lot, a lot. So that wasn't really issued. The fact is that the majority of his stuff is done through his club. This is the curricular portion. So for what he does for his class, he's like, he even was like, I don't really like, I'm going to put an amount of money on there because there are things, because I asked him about sets and things like that. He said, well, basically that was done through his club. So it really, so I think, and I, but our goal is hopefully this is going to grow and there would be more curriculum, more of a curricular program to support also the club part. So. I put that on there because it made him.
So many questions I had, number ones about the guitar racks. They must be like 10 guitar rack?
Yes. I think, I think they hold nine on two levels.
That's a guitar rack, because I'm kind of a guitar homo.
Right.
One rack's only like 39 bucks. So.
Hey, no, this is, yeah, this is a rack that holds 18 or 20 cases so that we can store them in that backstage comfort area.
And then the other thing actually was for the 612 art, they have a cricket on there.
Yes.
My wife is like craft or extraordinary. And I know for like another hundred bucks, you can get the end all be all. Wouldn't it make more sense to?
Well, that is what was requested. I, $100 isn't going to make or break. Either way, we could make that happen. They're trying to do some new things, things that kids are, and not just your traditional paper and.
Well, so I mean, they can do banners, they can do window stickers, they can do wood.
And that also is attributed to their art supplies. There was.
I, I would think that they could come up with something to put things in the student store.
Oh, yeah.
You know, Mustang coffee cups, hats, t-shirts, absolutely. It would make that money back.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to add, I think, like, I think the really.
Or at least have it, at least ask them if that's.
I think it's like $4.99, that really.
Yeah.
High end.
I can assure you this.
And they've asked for additional funds to be put in for their yearly budgets because this year's, this year's been really tough, the last couple of years because of the way budgets were cut. But when they were working from home, we bought supplies so kids could do stuff. And we sent it home with the kids when we were home, um, during the pandemic. But like, like Dan, Dan really never has had a supply, a repair budget in instruments or repair and replacement. We have instruments and need to have instruments that kids can use. And then we also, they have to be repaired. It's expensive. He's asking for a yearly replacement to kind of become a consumables budget of $10,000. He might not always need that, but he's, they're behind right now in repairing and replacing instruments. And I want you to note that on the right-hand side, see somewhere it says French horns, horns, the bass, the bass drum chimes and piccolos. He already, that's going to come to the board for, those are all, he got grants for all of that.
Nice.
From two or three different sources. I mean, he's, he's out there finding, finding ways. So.
Man, I don't care what, what you're saying about you. You're all right.
Yes, it's only wonderful thing about Mr. Norris. So I would like the permission to move forward. We still have to do the process of parent review and all of that. And then it has to go to the district instructional materials committee, which then the recommendation comes to you guys for the part, the game plan, playing curriculum. Music, uh, music play online. That one's a little of the, and the pro flex curriculum for 612. Those are, those are our, our, our curriculums.
So when will you bring this to the board?
So if I can move forward, it's going to go to the curriculum, the district instructor, instructional materials adoption committee, the recommendation goes to them. Then there has to be a two-week review for parents where we have the opportunity for parents review. So it will be, at this point, probably late June.
So there's, there's only a few things that are actually curriculum. The rest are.
Yeah, the rest are things. So that nobody has to approve those. You have to approve the curriculum.
In the drama, in the drama curriculum debate, does that include like set design and lighting and sound? Does that like also communicate location?
That's one of the, that's a way that he would like to expand. He would like to actually have a technical class. But right now, with budget restrictions and staffing restrictions, it's not likely. But that's a hope for the future. They actually in their plans and what they've, what they've written for what we have now, they've also, have also laid out what they hope to have in the future. The growth plan for them, for the arts.
What can we use that as a CTE program?
It can. You, you can. Technically, theater, there's, there's probably several things that they could do. It's just not something we've explored yet. But he still has to have a teacher, and the one teacher he has is teaching English the rest of the time. And I don't think he can give them up. It would have to be somebody else at this point, unless you had more teachers. Is that accurate?
The set design, set construction, and the bigger schools, lighting and sound. And those are jobs. You know, I think the princess has a section for those universities. There's many to do all those things. And that's the thing, if you go through CTE and have a position for that, it's not just, it's arts, but it's a trade.
Oh, yeah.
These are great skills.
Yes. And it's, I don't know if some of those could be cross, are cross credited for art, but go ahead, Mr. Bailey. Thank you for raising your hand.
Yes, those can be, we can get that through CTE. And I've had those discussions. But the risk that you run and the problem you run into is when you add a CTE, it's great, except your numbers for FTE and future ratios are affected by that as well. So then you have to compensate in other ways because you are then overstaffed. At the number of students that we have and the number of teachers that we have.
And the truth is, the program needs to grow. There has to be more interest in kids wanting to take the class for that to grow as well. I think there's a decent amount of interest, but we don't have a full day's interest.
How many kids does it take to make a class?
For drama?
We, we have set this, the standard has been set at 15 students per class.
For any, for any class?
For any class.
But for drama, I think there were, if you have a good sized class this year.
This year, we have one, one section of drama.
Is it still speech and drama, or is it something else?
But that's on the growth plan.
I think speech and drama 100 years ago was like one of the most popular classes at the high school. And it was such to, we would read scripts into you, but you would learn how to get up and talk to people by doing, and that's a life skill. And it's something that.
I'll take work on the college and the high school.
Did they have it when you returned out?
Um, I think that they've had, they might have one section of it. So.
English credit, they kind of write English credit. They had a really dynamic drama teacher at that class. She did the points and the side Diane Thomas. But it was a super popular class. And I mean, just taught you how to talk, how to make it hard on it, you know, persuasive talking.
So if I'm not hearing anything against this, would it make more sense, Diana, to separate the, by $12,000 worth of curriculum adoption and?
The, the only, the reason, I brought this because the talk discussion was of taking that money I haven't said yet. I just want to be able to move forward. And then I'm not worried about the, the rest of the adoption process will move through that. But as long as I, you just wanted to know what it was going to cost, I said, I'll bring it. So there's no objection. I'm going to move forward.
And so it's a new budget already?
Yeah.
I think it's part of, you know, for short on curriculum as it is, I mean, baby steps, right?
They've done so much work to get here. It would be really hard to.
Yeah. So, so do you have projections about what work that come up off a budget, a budget report?
In this specific thing?
No, as far as the total, overall.
Got some good news. And I was going to do share now, or I can share.
Is it the 900?
It's Wednesday.
We already.
First by bubble?
Yeah.
Which year is it?
No, actually, I think you were told next year.
And here's another one. So.
Can you tell me next year?
I think that was.
Let's hear all the good news.
Yeah.
Nothing but good news.
And then state auditor's office, the cleanest audit that we've ever.
Today's the 18th on May 31st. Our fund balance is, we're going to get $900,000, $100,000 increase from the state, it's the state legislature.
Tell them what the auditor told Jamie and I yesterday.
And it was.
She wasn't there, but it was.
Oh, you meant?
Yeah, they seldom have audits like, like what we've had. So there's, you know, just to give you a understanding that sometimes they make recommendations. Sometimes there's management letters, which are directives. And then of course, the worst case scenario is that they're findings. But it was so clean, they didn't even really have any recommendations. And so, yeah, so it was, it takes a lot of hard work. And so.
It was perfect.
He goes out on top, Craig does. So. Yeah.
Clean.
That's very clean. Yeah.
Becky was so excited when that auditor was going through the results. She was just, it was perfect. It was like, yeah. Congratulations.
So the, the, the point was, is that it's, it's budgeted, I think, will, Craig has had a tendency to come in over or to have surplus of what he budgeted for. And that's range from, you know, $100,000. You know, upward. So.
Last year was a anomaly.
Yeah. But so it's budgeted for, and I think the, the mindset that we have to have kind of going forward that as we start to get into talks about budget approval in next year, the idea that we're going to be tightening down and doing our best to reduce extra costs and expenditures where we can. So next year will look a little bit different than this year. But, yeah, trying to prepare for that. And, and I, yeah, I think we'll be in a healthier financial position. Perhaps because of some of the moves that we're making.
Is there many coming? Is the one thing great?
Yep.
You have to do a budget amendment through the influx of.
The only man will be on the expenditure side. And I'm still kind of looking at that. So when the board authorizes or adopts the budget, it's just the expenditure side. So if we get a million dollars and we technically, you know, spend it, I mean, it's just going to reduce our our overage that we're spending this year. So our balance will go up, you know, $90,000.
Yeah.
So ballpark, or, you know, we started out at 5.4 million in fund balance. The budget was estimated at, you know, 1.7 to round numbers. You know, you did 900,000 to reduce that, you know. Easily to say, yeah, we'll spend a million dollars of our fund balance this year. It's kind of what I'm trying to focus on, you know. And then if we have a balanced budget as best we can next year, then we should be up at $4 million off, whatever, which is 10% roughly. I'll depend upon enrollment next year. I'm, you know, nervous about that. I've estimated 53 less students, but we don't know what the impact's going to be with that school year, bright school and schooling and all that stuff. So that's really going to have to be watched, you know, way over then.
Have you heard anything about that private school?
No, but we're actually doing student enrollment for next year. We're doing student enrollment now, right? Parents, instead of waiting till August like we normally do.
I know we have.
Well, they're only 45 kids the first year. No kind of having. Fourth grade. Second and third and fourth and fifth.
Okay. So they, they open induction for 35 kids?
45.
45.
Right. Anything else, guys?
We only have the calendar for next year.
I don't know, maybe it's on the website. But at least I was told it was put on the website. I didn't actually look for myself to make sure it was there. But I think it is because one of my secretary said, thank you.
Do any of the buildings have their student handbooks, a hard copy ready to go out?
We actually had a discussion today about whether or not we wanted to go with agendas. So I'll visit and figure that.
Because that was one of the things we were going to have our, our parent group look at first, whichever one's ready first, have them read through it, make suggestions and. So nothing else? Right. Oh, wait, I gotta talk about meetings. Next regular meeting right here, May 25th, we'll have a special meeting.
What time?
Four to 4:30, 4:30. No, three to, 3:30 to four, four to 4:30, and then possibly a debrief.
Board meeting next Wednesday, I'll have to zoom in.
Yeah. And then they're looking at Tuesday, the 24th is a good day. And so we can call a special meeting on that if everybody wants to.
Okay. I'll have to zoom in. That's okay.
Except four to 4:30, 4:30.
Right. Three, 3:30 to four, four to 4:30.
So that will be the.
The second, the second round of finals.
Is everybody going to be able to make it?
We probably will do it in here since it's a board meeting, you'll have to zoom in.
If it's a board meeting, I'm going to show up, but I will sit back, so to speak.
Yeah.
That will be, and you gave the time, so I'm not going to.
Yeah.
And then the next regular board meeting will be May 25th, right here, six o'clock. And if there's nothing else, meetings adjournments.